Welcome everyone, I think it's probably 6 o'clock. We'll start with our usual prayer and pledge followed by roll call. Dear God, as we come together today, we give you thanks for the good gifts you give us. We ask for your guidance in our lives and we pray that your love would live among us. We humbly ask you to watch over our families, friends, and those that protect our country. May only goodness surround them. Give us wisdom to make fair decisions that will be equitable to all. Help us recognize and enjoy all blessings that you have placed in our lives. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Jones.
Here.
Ridgeway.
I'm here.
Beverly.
I'm here.
Thank you. You have in your packet the December 17th regular council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
You have the December 27th special council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve as written. Second.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Obey and apologize.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
And I see we have approval of bills on our council agenda, but we do not have any bills tonight in your packet. So, at this time, I would ask you to consider who you want as council president for 2019.
Nominate Mike Barth.
I would... Does anyone else want to add any names? Could we have a motion to close the nominations then?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly. Barth. Whoops.
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry.
Thank you everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. We will go on to boards and commissions. You have in your packet the minutes from the December 20th Union Cemetery meeting. Sheila, would you like to give a report on that?
I would just like to thank everybody. It's Cheryl Miller and Zane Zedek and Ron Bauer and Kenny Blair for all the hard work they've done. They go beyond their job. They've done really well and they don't think anything of it. They just do. They're just good people and they do a good job and I'd like to thank them and I appreciate what they've done. And I think that's about...
What do we need heat in that building for?
That is kind of a joke. They just said that so I wrote it down. They laughed afterwards and I thought, "I'm gonna put that on there."
Is Zane planning to go off the cemetery board?
He did.
He's good.
He called me the other day and told me Josh Metz would be taking his place.
Big old...
No.
Okay.
I hate to see that, but I mean, not that I don't think Josh will do a good job, but I know Zane cares.
Josh did a awful good job when he was sexy, not good.
Does anyone have any other questions for Sheila? Zane, I would like to thank Zane for his service on the cemetery board and for everyone that serves on there and works out there. It is a very nice looking cemetery. And if something's brought to their attention, they're quick to remedy the situation, so...
And they all work together. Don Brown, we all, you know, nobody was ever left out in a decision. And that's the way it should be.
Okay, we have Hicks TV Board Minutes in the packets and I guess, does anyone have any questions or comments about the Hicks TV Board Minutes? They meet again this coming Saturday at 8:00 at the school in case anybody wants to stop by and attend the Hicks TV meeting.
I know Bill works hard on that in the committee. Maybe once a month and think of ideas, trying to update the equipment and provide better coverage of Hicksville and certain events. I know a lot of school events and council and school board and they've got a nice board that tries to meet and come up with new ideas and update equipment, like I said. Thank you, Bill, for all the time you spent on the station.
I have several representatives of SMTA in the studio today and although there is nothing that I can announce officially as of yet, we are getting very close to being able to make some announcements regarding SMTA and Hicks TV.
That's great. I do know a few people that have switched to SMTA that missed watching the council meetings. Bill, you do a great job. Thanks for all your time.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
So, are there any other boards and commissions? I'll get to you, Ron, later on in the report. All right. So then we'll go on to council committee reports. Nobody submitted any, but are there any committees of council that want to say anything? Anything you've been working on or anything before your committees totally change? All right, then we will go on to the administrators' report.
Anyway, nothing's changed. Still waiting for Andy Hall to get back with me for a date when he'll be coming. Mike Fritchy, which is down there towards the bottom, he's coming tomorrow. So I guess unless people have questions, it's pretty self-explanatory.
You ever deal with them before?
Oh, Fritchy?
Yeah.
Yeah, they built the sewer plant.
So it's the same company that built the school that are really good to work with?
Did you get invited to the meeting that Jerry Hayes was in town for today? Okay, I just wondered. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Kent? All right. Then we will go on to... Well, I guess you also had a chance to... Did you have any questions about the wastewater treatment plant reports or the water treatment plant report that were submitted? There were quite a few pages to some of those reports. Were there any questions? Kent, did you get an answer if we were really 30% of total? 30% of our water loss was... Did we actually have a 30% water loss?
On paper. I came down this afternoon, went over stuff with Don and Jesse and I don't think we're leaking 36 million gallons of water a year, but based on numbers, yeah, that's what it's showing. We'll find out more when Aqua Line comes in this spring, but something will be floating away at first 36 million gallons.
They added in the gallons that we build, but also in that number.
Yeah, I would have removed the billed customer number of 75 million.
No, I'm glad that's in there because it gives us something to go on. So now everything, everybody's got recorded accurate as far as we know. Once we get it figured out, I'll let you know that I don't think we're losing that much water.
I hope not.
Speaking of that, I know Ron had asked for some numbers about the treatment plant and what we're actually doing through the plant, the rain events. This first, he did this back in July, and this other chart here, which has a lot more numbers on it and broke down a different way, the numbers kind of coincide with this other report. As you see for 2018, and they didn't do rain events in January, February, March because they'd freeze, the rain gauge down there would freeze, but I think they're remembering that now and actually taking those measurements. But you're showing almost 31 CSO flagged events for 2018. And basically those are two different places at the head of the plant. I know with the new committee coming on board, we're gonna... I wanted a meeting right out of the gate here in January with the new committee and talk about these numbers and what our projects are here forthcoming, what the separations down the road here, so... But Jeff compiled these numbers. It's kind of looked confusing.
I don't think they are.
Yeah, but I was asking Jeff if he's gonna be at the meeting tonight. He's at a basketball meeting, but I want the committee to meet with him come January here and go through all this data.
You considered rain events and we really haven't picked up much.
They were also talking, and I asked them about this, I also talked to Andy, if the frequency and duration of the rain events, if we get hit with a large, even like a one-inch rain in two or three hours, it's gonna overflow. Now, if it's a gradual rain, like the rains we've been having there last night and today, it's a slow, steady rain, we would have the overflows like we had with the heavier rain quickly. And Jeff was explaining that too with these numbers, so... I know the numbers aren't showing, you know, a lot of change in the events, but hopefully they're showing less total, you know, going through the plant and everything.
I went over them a few or three times and I haven't gained.
Thank you. So we will go on to the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is Resolution 2019-01, a first reading by caption only. Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into the contract with Hooker Meyer Design Group for design work on Chicago Avenue, West High Street, Storm Sewer as part of Phase 2 of the Long Term Control Plan. And then Resolution 2019-02, first reading by caption only. A resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing an easement to Ohio Gas Company for the relocation of gas lines and other utility equipment and declaring it emergency. Kent could probably explain this a little better, but this has to do with the two bay and it's their expansion back there.
They're relocating the gas line in the former alley over here. I don't think they're gonna be on any of our property, but they're just wanting to cover themselves in case they wander over onto us. Our property ends as soon as we open that door, so I don't think they're gonna be hitting our building. Doesn't sound like they're gonna do anything out back. Sounds like it's all gonna be here on the side, but they still wanted just to get something from us to be on the safe side. And they wanted to do that work this week, that's why I thought, "Well, this is gonna have to be..."
I'm... We should suspend the rules. I don't have a problem with it.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
So second, third readings of Resolution 2019-02. By caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing an easement to Ohio Gas Company for the relocation of gas lines and other utility equipment and declaring it emergency.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Troy, I was wondering, where do we stand with the cemetery and land information? Kent sent to you?
Yeah, I researched it, I think... I'm not sure we should talk about an open session, but we can talk if somebody wants the executive session, but I got an answer somewhere. I mean, I told them before, we own the land. There's no doubt about that. The question is, can we do anything with it?
You do.
I was gonna bring up, I'd like to go to executive session, the land acquisition.
Can we just do that at the end of the meeting?
That's fine.
This one we're gonna talk about the other...
Are there any items that are outstanding that Troy needs to tell us about that anybody can think of, that you're waiting on? Okay.
Is there anything you're waiting on?
Well, that's what I was waiting on. This is what I was waiting on. All right, we'll go to the department head reports. Police chief, do you have anything to report?
I have a lot of work, still working with the body cameras with Axon. Talked to them today. They have a new sales rep that will be in starting the 14th. The other sales rep is leaving. It sounds like there's... We're not gonna be able to negotiate anything towards in-card cameras, but they said it might be cheaper for us to get the in-card cameras, at least the hardware for the in-card cameras, because we already had the body mic and everything. It's associated with the body mic, it's already there. So I don't know what the price would be on a body cam... Or an in-card. So, and then Verizon, I talked to them today about air cards for the laptop computers for the cruisers. They're supposed to be sending me a... I gotta find out, I wanted to check with Cheryl tomorrow about, see if we ever had a contract with Verizon for air cards, because they said they used to have laptops in their cars. I don't know if you provided the service or the internet service for that, but he didn't show an account for us, so...
Doesn't the fire department have one? Bruce, don't you guys have with Verizon?
It's a long... It's associated with the building over there. That's basically what we have. Right now, we have "I am responding," which goes through the internet, so... We're not like what these guys have or what...
Yeah, I knew you didn't have that, but I didn't...
We don't have any laptops in our vehicles yet.
Chief, back to the body cameras. Are you able to get that contract canceled?
No. They're telling me I'd have to have Troy look at it.
Okay, because, I mean, we're not using... If we could cancel it right now, you know, we're paying insurance, we're paying cloud, we're paying.
According to this guy, we're stuck with it.
Let me email it over to you, I'll look at it.
So...
Anything else?
No, it's been busy three weeks since I've been here.
I have no doubt.
So, other than that, it's going okay.
It's been very quiet for me. Okay, how about Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Hart?
Nothing to report on, but Scott and I'd like to thank council for their past, last year's support of the fire department. Thank you.
All right. We will go on to Ron Hard, representing the park, I believe, tonight.
I have nothing.
Nothing to report, okay. All right, thanks for coming.
I will say one thing about the park. In case people are seeing down at the park, the boys' baseball diamond, arrow fence has been there the last two, three days, and they're ripping out all the backstop and all the fence around the whole thing. The school's paying for that. I just want to make sure people know that it was the athletic department, the school's paying for all that work to be done. They did it over the winter to save money, so it's not coming from the park budget or from village money, so...
Great.
Next summer right now, though, but not even winter.
I'm in with that.
Wait till this weekend.
Okay, if there are no other people under department heads here, we'll go to the fiscal officers' report.
You have the annual letter from American Tower wanting to buy out our lease. And then we have an email from Comrade Beck telling you that there's new... A change in the policy having to do with anyone who's canceling a policy midterm. He sent an email out. Of all of the fund status says of December 31st, and that is our final number, the $5,815, or 59, or 55. And then you also have the December income tax report, utility report, revolving loan, and mayor's court. And I'm almost to year end, and I don't have any bills today because I'm still putting in new purchase orders. Have a bunch of next time.
Just for public information, the Hicksville Village income tax receipts were up 6% in 2018, so I'm very happy. I think Kim's doing a great job in April. And thank you for all of your reports, Cheryl. The mayor's court report, one of the most...
Mayor, before we go to that, this tower, because we wanted it in the record, but we're not interested.
That would be...
I don't think we're interested.
That would probably be good to get on record.
We would get it like a year or two ago and it's the same thing, and the numbers are probably different, the same concept.
But I don't think we want to play that game at all, and it should be a matter of record.
Good idea.
Thank you, Mayor.
So then, mayor's court report, I found it interesting. Did you see this at all? I was gonna ask Jewel if she shared it with you. Cases filed in 2017 were 248 traffic and 13 criminal, and cases filed in 2018 were 125 traffic and 35 criminal. I just thought that was interesting. So, I guess we're down to the mayor's report, and I just want to remind residents that I noticed out on the front shelf at the front of City Hall is the schedule for the 2019 recycling and trash pickup schedule, so if you... And also a list of recyclables with Whirlers. So if you think you would like one of those lists, just stop by City Hall and pick it up. And then you have in your packet tonight, the... Well, it wasn't your packet, it was on the table tonight, your list of 2019 council committees. And there are a few openings on the boards and commission. The park board, Rick Belton's term expired at the end of December. I spoke to him today. He's okay to stay on. And Bill was checking with a couple...
I need to get back to a couple people for Hicks TV.
Bill was checking...
They're asking me to be up into...
Okay, a couple people on Hicks TV Bill's checking with. Sheila, you liked the cemetery board real well. I assumed that you wanted to be on it.
Fine.
Okay. And then Mike Scranton's term ended December 31st on the planning commission, but Mike Bailey feels that he enjoys it and he'll stay also. So when I get those for sure, I will... I see Tom Stuckman's term ended December 31st on the zoning board of appeals. I'll have to check also and see if he wants to stay on. So I'll get the rest of your boards and stuff to you when they all get completed, if that makes sense.
Mayor, I'm on that fireman's board, and I don't have a problem staying.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. So I guess the last thing I have before you want to go into executive session meeting, I will read the state of the village and try not to bore you. It'll be a recap of the year. Happy New Year to everyone. 2018 was a very busy year in the village. First, I would like to thank all of our village employees and volunteers. They have an abundance of knowledge and experience. As residents, you may not realize their importance until you need them. We have well-trained professionals in our ranks, and I'm very proud of them all. Please welcome our new police chief, Mark Dunning, when you see him. Last January, we were fortunate to see the grand opening of a new Head Start location on West High Street behind Casa Grande. It's a very nice facility that we can be proud of. The community pitched in for the first Go Local Work Day in May. The volunteers got a lot accomplished around the village thanks to the organizing efforts of Taylor and Kelsey Klepper. The number of employees has continued to grow for many of our local businesses and industries. Some companies were fortunate to experience expansion projects as well. I'm very happy for their success in the village council, and I will continue to support these businesses in any way possible. The first summer manufacturing camp was held for Hicksville and Fairmont students in July. They were able to tour APT, Stowit, Spangler Candy Company, Gordon Creek Granite, and Five Acre Mill to get some hands-on experience and understanding of what opportunities there are in the manufacturing world. The event was planned by Carla Henkel, Workforce Development Director for the Defiance County Economic Development Organization. I would like to give a special thanks to resident Greg Balser, who spent several days with the students, interacting with them and challenging them to answer questions about what processes they learned. The first summer concert series kicked off in June and lasted through the summer. Many thanks to the local talent that performed free and to the Huber Opera House Committee for allowing this event to take place on the Huber side porch. Planning for the 2019 lineup of performances is already underway. The committee hopes to expand by adding more dates and vendors. The committee consisted of Tony Slattery, Jason Schooly, Zane Zedek, and Taylor Klepper. Pickleball came to Hicksville this summer. It may not sound like a big deal, but anything we can do to provide a healthy activity in the village is a win-win as far as I'm concerned. Thank you to Amy Galbraith, past president of Hicksville Rotary, for her work towards getting $50,000 put in the state budget for the restroom located at Adventure Alley. It was a much-needed improvement. The entire project was probably considered a nightmare to get accomplished, but I think everyone is pretty pleased with the results. The local veterans committee and Tanya Brunner for the Defiance County Veterans Office worked together with Mark Homeyer to design another monument for the veterans memorial. The World War I Centennial Commemoration Ceremony was held November 11th with author Mitch Yokelson as the guest speaker. Thank you to everyone who helped make that a success. Dave Brown Designs updated the Muse Argon Memorial Rock at the corner of Muse Argon and Elm Street in conjunction with the event. Matt Snyder originally did the work as an Eagle Scout project. I would like to give a special thank you to Kent Miller for doing a ton of research to gather information on our World War I residents for the commemoration. A new police department sign was designed and installed by Dave Brown Designs. GoFundMe donations and money from the village paid for a new Welcome to Hicksville sign, again created by Dave Brown. The new sign was placed in front of Sabre on the west end of town. We'll be forever grateful to the Kiwanis and Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts for all the signs they've designed, built, and cared for over the past 30-plus years. Hopeful they will continue to do so. A community reinvestment area was established to provide tax incentives for property owners that make improvements to their homes. The area pretty much consists of the entire community. A committee has been set up, and I think they're nearly ready to begin accepting applications for tax incentives for improvements in new construction or additions requiring building permits for residential or commercial properties. We want potential homeowners and builders to choose Hicksville. We have completed Phase 1 of the EPA mandate to remove combined sewer overflows from our sewer system. The village spent $4.543 million on Phase 1. We received various grants and loans for these projects. At this time, our annual debt retirement in the sewer fund is $471,000. We have a lot of sewer work ahead of us to complete in Phase 2, and I will explain those details in the future. I've heard good comments about Hicksville's decision to contract with Whirlers for the Refuge Collection Service that completed its first year in 2018. The Defiance County Solid Waste Management still comes to Hicksville the first Friday each month to pick up recyclables. I am told the service is still well-received. I cannot end this without saying thank you to the village council members, our county commissioners, the Defiance County Economic Development Office, Northwest Ohio Service Agencies, Hicksville Service Organizations, the PRS, volunteers, churches, pastors, T-Vires, and various others. Our community is successful because of these organizations and you. Thank you for the privilege of serving, and may God grant you many blessings in the New Year. Mayor Diane Collins. Did I forget anything? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would willingly go into an executive session.
For what purpose? For what purpose?
For a possible land purchase, for possibly selling something, and anything else we don't think of.
Okay, all right. For the record. Okay, roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Possible landlord, just, I don't know anything about them.
Okay. Well, if you would like to hang around till the end of the council meeting, I guess you can do so in my office or...
Don, the utility room, well...
And you would chill with, okay, so... All right, have fun.